Good evening. The October 8th, 2019 meeting of the Marion County School Board is called to order. For the courtesy of those listening to the meeting, I'm requesting everyone in the audience, please turn off your electronic devices or put them on vibrate. Later in the meeting, up to thirty minutes will be provided for individuals to address the board on matters concerning the operation of the Marion County school system or the school board only. Presentations to the board are limited to five minutes and are televised. If you wish to address the board regarding a regular agenda item or matters on which the board customarily takes action, you must first complete a peach form located on the table in the hallway. If you wish to address the board regarding a public hearing or a student discipline matter, please complete a lime green form. These forms must be fully completed and received by the board secretary no later than 5:40 PM. The procedures applicable for each are on a separate sheet. Madam Secretary, please call roll.
This is Beth McCall, District 2.
Here.
This is Nancy Stacy, District 1.
Here.
Mrs. Nancy Throer, District 4.
Here.
Mr. Eric Cummings, District 3.
Here.
This is Kelly King, District 5.
Here.
Dr. Heidi Mayer, Superintendent.
Here.
Mr. Paul Gibbs, School Board Attorney.
Here.
Thank you. Mr. Cummings, would you like to read our commitment statement?
Yeah.
Thank you.
Good evening. We are the Marion County Leadership Team. If we choose one word to describe us, it will be student-centered because student success is our mission. When we come together to work, we are efficient, effective, and relevant. Our three most important characteristics are dedicated, diverse, and dynamic. To work well together, we must demonstrate respect, confront reality, and clarify expectations, and get better. We do not accept excuses. We will not accept mediocrity. We will always put students first, and we will leave a legacy of success.
Thank you. Mr. David Ellers, Director of Student Services, please introduce the individual or souls who will be providing the inspiration and leading us in the pledge this evening.
Good evening. It's my pleasure to introduce Ms. Lisa Panzer and Katie Burley, who are two of our superstar social workers in our district. They take the lead and have as a department in preparing our schools for Red Ribbon Week, where we celebrate being drug-free. And as you know from seeing our board agenda at times, that drugs have an impact right here in Marion County schools, and that it's important that we are at the forefront in supporting our anti-drug campaign throughout our district.
Dr. Heidi Mayer, distinguished members of the board, we would like to tell you the story of Kiki. Kiki was a Drug Enforcement Administration agent who was tortured and killed in Mexico in 1985. But first, when he decided to join the USDA, he told his mother that she couldn't talk him out of it. Like many of us, he ignored her wishes, stating, "I am only one person, but I want to make a difference." In honor of Kiki's memory and his battle against illegal drugs, friends and neighbors began to wear red badges of satin. Parents, sick of the destruction of alcohol and other drugs, had began to form coalitions. Some of these new coalitions took Kiki as their model and embraced this belief that one person can make a difference. Today, the Red Ribbon serves as a catalyst to mobilize communities, to educate youth, and encourage participation in drug prevention activities. Since that time, the campaign has reached millions in U.S. citizens, families, and children. As the school's social worker and this year's co-chair of the Red Ribbon Campaign, we are so excited to say Marion County schools will be participating in Red Ribbon Week, October 21st through the 25th. We're encouraging schools to embrace this year's theme of "Send a message, stay drug-free," and we truly believe that together, in partnership with our amazing parents and this community's support, that this year's event will be tremendously successful. We're only social workers, two people, but if we can make a difference in one parent, change the path, or have them stay sober or become sober, then we know that we have made a difference. Thank you.
Please stand and join us in the pledge. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Thank you, ladies.
I recommend approval of the agenda for the October 8th, 2019, school board meeting with the materials in the board packet. Those materials distributed to board members at the meeting and the audio recording included as part of the official record of the meeting.
Thank you. May I have a motion on the superintendent's recommendation?
So moved.
Second.
Moved by Ms. Throer, second by Mr. Cummings. Cummings, all those in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
And the motion passed unanimously. May I have a motion to approve the minutes for August 8th, 2019 Administrative Briefing and Work Session?
So moved.
Moved by Mr. Cummings, second by Ms. McCall. Are there any additions or corrections to the minutes? Seeing none, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
And the motion passes unanimously. May I have a motion to approve the minutes for August 13th, 2019, school board meeting?
So moved.
Moved by Ms. McCall.
Second.
Second by Mr. Cummings. Are there any additions or corrections? Seeing none, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
And the motion passed unanimously. May I have a motion to approve the minutes for the August 15th, 2019 Administrative Briefing and Work Session?
So moved.
Moved by Ms. Throer.
Second.
Second by Ms. McCall. Are there any additions or corrections? Seeing none, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
And the motion passed unanimously. I will now ask the school board attorney to explain the rules governing persons who wish to address the school board tonight.
Good evening. In compliance with Section 286.0114 of Florida statutes, the school board has adopted uniform procedures for public speakers who wish to speak at tonight's meeting, either regarding one of tonight's agenda items or a matter relating to the operations of the school district. These procedures will ensure the public has a reasonable opportunity to be heard on school board and school district matters. A written summary of these procedures is available from the table in the hallway. Public speaker forums are also located on the same table. The completed forums are due to the school secretary no later than 5:40 PM. Tonight's speakers will be called prior to the business portion of the school board's meeting in the order of receipt by the school board secretary. Before you begin speaking, please state your full name and address for the record and spell your last name. Each speaker will have five minutes of time. However, if there are more than five persons who wish to speak, the board may seek consensus to limit each speaker's time to thirty minutes. When the speaker has one minute remaining, the speaker will receive a visual notice to complete his or her comments. Speakers may not yield their time to other people. Speakers and meeting attendees are expected to conduct themselves in a respectful manner. Therefore, verbal attacks and profanity are strictly prohibited. Pursuant to the procedures for public comments, item number six, speakers are not to identify specific individuals other than themselves or their child unless the statement is provided twenty-four hours in advance. If there are matters dealing with student discipline, including expulsions, they will be scheduled at the conclusion of the televised portion of this meeting. Parents may address the board regarding a discipline matter at that time. To ensure student privacy only, a parent or guardian may use a student's first or last name. Identifying references to or identification of other students and/or their families are also strictly prohibited. Thank you for your attention to the board's rules.
Thank you. Ms. Martina Lopez, do we have any speakers this evening?
We do. Ms. Norbella Haynes?
Good evening. Norbella Haynes, Haynes, H-E-Y-N-E-S, Post Office Box 363, Ocala, Florida. Chairwoman King, Vice Chair Cummings, Members Throer, Stacy, and McCall. To Attorney Gibbs, Ms. Lopez, Superintendent, Mayor, good evening to each of you. Board members, on August 27th, we sat here and saw your pain, tears, and disbelief as we heard testimonies of representatives from the Evergreen Twelve that were involved in the takedown on August 16th. And to see the superintendent sit here as if she was clueless was another slap in the face to you, the staff, and Marion County. We felt your pain and disbelief. Also, Marion County deserves better. And not only that, but how you all were notified thirty minutes before the attack of intimidation, embarrassment, and humiliation. To each of you tonight, I accept your apologies along with many others in this county. I guess we will never get an apology from the superintendent and deputy superintendent. As a professional woman of integrity and an advocate for our children and love for my community and Marion County, I cannot rest at ease knowing that the Marion County system is at rock bottom when it comes to the fear of employees and their lack of support when it comes to the superintendent, deputy superintendents, and other leaders. On Friday, September 6th, I was in awe as I read ocala.com and saw our superintendent was filing a lawsuit against the board for violating the sunshine law after they had called for an investigation to the whistleblower's complaints. After reading that, I came to the conclusion that the superintendent must feel empowered over others and do what she wants to do without remorse for others, and when she can't have her way, she wants to retaliate. Now she wants the taxpayers to pay for her legal fees. Now that the state attorney's office has completed their investigation and found no truth to the allegation of the sunshine law being broken, I want to know if the superintendent will have to pay those funds back for their attorney fee. At the September 11th school board meeting, when one of the board members was giving her observations, she read a statement about some issues and concerns about paraprofessionals not being in some classrooms, and you all, board members, were previously told there were. To me, you were not given correct information. Tell me how this can be acceptable and continue to go on, so I guess it's okay to provide misleading information. At the last board meeting, a board member addressed the lack of proficiency in reading. Before you start seeing how to retain the students, has anyone thought about trying to get to the root cause why they are non-proficient? When you hear teachers and other professionals are saying too much pressure is being put on our children, there is a problem in the curriculum or how they are being taught. This is not just a Marion County issue. We know it is a statewide issue as well. On October 3rd, at the school board workshop, to hear the school board members being challenged by the superintendent's attorney was so unfair. Me along with others would like to know if he incurred attorney fees for his presentation at the meeting and what was the total cost. As taxpayers, we would like to know how can we pay four hundred-plus dollars an hour for legal fees for the superintendent, and our teachers and students have to go without? I'm going to close with this question. When are we going back to educating our children and stop playing politics and Russian roulette with their lives and future? And as a conclusion, if it's appropriate this time, I would like for us to take one moment of silence, prayer for peace, love, for our superintendent and administrators.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay. You just had the one speaker. All right. May I have a motion to approve the five-year district facilities construction project program for fiscal years 2019 through 2020 through 2023 through 2024?
So moved.
Moved by Ms. Throer, second by Mr. Cummings. Dr. Mayor?
The board is required by statute to issue and approve an annually updated five-year district facilities construction project program of all projected school system capital outlay construction projects and major maintenance projects for submittal to an approval by the Department of Education.
I declare a public hearing. Is there anyone present who wishes to address the five-year district facilities construction project program? Seeing none. Board, discussion, none. Seeing none, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
And the motion passed unanimously. May I have a motion to adopt resolution number 19-10 recommending the Board of County Commissioners of Marion County, Florida, that it deny the large-scale future land use map amendment number 2019-L02?
So moved.
Moved by Ms. McCall.
Second.
Second by Mr. Cummings. Board, is there any further discussion on this item? Do you have anything?
No.
Okay. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
And the motion passed unanimously. May I have a motion to approve consent agenda item C8.1-C20.1? Need a motion?
So moved.
Moved by Mr. Cummings.
Second.
Second by Ms. McCall. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
And the motion passed unanimously. May I have a motion to approve the change order number one, Amendment Number Four, deductive change order to construct a new sidewalk and sign at Wyamina Park Elementary School, Project Number 16-100, in the amount of, with the deduction, you always correct me, $2,018.28?
So moved.
Moved by Ms. Throer, second by Mr. Cummings. Do we have any discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
And the motion passed unanimously. May I have a motion to approve change order number one, Amendment Work Authorization Number 12, Deductive Change Order for Piping Modifications as Part of Cooling Tower Replacement at Evergreen Elementary School, Project Number 17-101, in the amount of, deduct?
Deduction.
$18,001.87?
So moved.
Moved by Mr. Cummings.
Second.
Second by Ms. Throer. Any discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
And the motion passed unanimously. May I have a motion to approve the following cash or tangible donations that have a total value of $32,924? $2,500 to Bellevue High School from their business partner, Land Rover Ocala, via the Public Education Foundation of Marion County. $2,500 to Denellan Elementary School from their business partner, Land Rover Ocala, via the Public Education Foundation of Marion County. $2,500 to Evergreen Elementary School from their business partner, Ocala Electric Utility, via the Public Education Foundation of Marion County. $2,500 to Forest High School from their business partner, Real Truck, via Public Education Foundation. $4,000 to Fort McCoy School from Monroe Regional Health Systems, Inc. $1,300 to Hillcrest School from Jeffrey Saylor CPA. $2,500 to Legacy Elementary School from their business partner twice upon a time via the Public Education Foundation of Marion County. Bravely Lawn Mower valued at $2,624 to Madison Street Academy for Madison Street PTA. $5,000 to Marion Technical Institute College from Summer Glen Veterans Club. $2,500 to Shady Hill Elementary from their business partner, the Paddock Mall, Paddock Mall Chick-fil-A, via the Public Education Foundation of Marion County. $2,500 to South Ocala Elementary School from their business partner, Neighborhood Storage Center, via the Public Education of Marion County. $2,500 to Westport High School from their business partner, Real Truck, via the Public Education Foundation of Marion County. Can I have a motion?
So moved.
Moved by Ms. Throer, second by Mr. Cummings. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
And our motion passed unanimously. And Ms. Throer, would you like to give her gratitude?
It's one of the best parts of every meeting.
It is.
Yes. We continue to be so grateful to our business partners, the Public Education Foundation, veterans clubs, our local small businesses, and also large businesses. Chick-fil-A is pretty huge, and the fact that they all come together on behalf of supporting our students in Marion County public schools, we continue to just be so grateful, and thank you so much.
Thank you. The next special administrative briefing and work session is scheduled for Wednesday, October 16th, 2019, at 9:00 AM. The purpose of the work session is to discuss strategic plan goals. The following regular administrative briefing and work session is scheduled for Thursday, October 17th, 2019, at 9:00 AM. The purpose of this work session is to discuss the 2020 tentative work session schedule review, district-wide attendance zones, annual Public Education Foundation report, and budget employees review. And now we will begin with our reports and comments. Dr. Mayor, we will begin with you this evening.
Thanks. Well, that was quick, wasn't it? That was a quick meeting. Okay. Officer Fernandez, thanks for being here tonight. This is the first time you've been with us. Okay. All right. Well, welcome. We're glad you were here this evening, and thanks for all you do. Thank you for keeping us safe. October 2nd was Custodians' Day. So, as I was getting my notes ready for tonight, and I wanted to mention that, I was thinking to myself, right now, I'm an empty nester because Jack's in college, so it's just me and the cats. And I think about how the fuss I go through with just keeping my house straight with just me and the cats, and to think about what our custodians do every day to keep our schools clean so that they're safe, that's a monumental task, and we just don't thank them enough. So, I know they were recognized on that day, but they deserve to be recognized this evening as well, and so we send them many thanks for all that they do at every school. And then, next week, October 14th to 18th, is National School Lunch Week, and so, again, a shout-out to all of our food service workers and the great job that they do, because not only are they preparing so many meals every day for our kids that we know are nutritious, but the presentation of them, the way, I remember when I was in elementary school and we would go through the line, and it was just kind of like, you know, it just kind of got shoved on your plate, but now, my gosh, the detail that our folks put into the presentation so everything looks as good as it tastes and encourages these kids to try fresh fruits and vegetables and good choices, that's admirable as well, so we thank them for that. And last week, I attended the Greenway Fall Festival, and while I was there, I was noticing that there were quite a few teenage, teenagers, all in the same orange shirts, and as I watched, they appeared to be helping in different areas. Well, it turned out that that was the Lake Weir Key Club, and they were there volunteering, and they do a lot with Greenway and with Emerald Shores, and it's a lot of fun for them to give back to the schools that they came from, and then to inspire those kids by leading by example. And instances of our high school kids giving back to their, to the younger kids, happens all the time, but that was the most recent example, and so I wanted to recognize that in them, and just another example, the great things that are happening. And then, I wanted to inform the board that upon the discovery of multiple issues concerning our application process and resulting examination of candidates for employment opportunities here with Marion County Public Schools, I'm working with Ms. Boston Ellis to have an independent audit of the Employment Services Division. And once that occurs, well, enduring it too, if appropriate, we'll update the board, but I will report to the board any recommendations as soon as that is completed. So, thank you very much.
Ms. Martina Lopez?
Just a reminder, board, that on the 17th, after our work session, you do have an attorney-client session, and you do have MEA-MESP with Brent Carson. So, you guys should have gotten an invite today from Mr. Carson, and you already got one previously from me for the attorney-client session, so just be prepared for those.
Thank you. Mr. Gibbs? Ms. Throer, we'll begin with you this evening.
Okay. This is just great news, all the way around, and certainly worthy of celebrating, because Marion County Public Schools, along with our health insurance provider, Barrett, Liner, and Bus, we're very excited to host our first BEAT Breast Cancer Event this coming Saturday, October 12th, at Radiology Associates and Women's Imaging Center. And the BEAT Breast Cancer Event is already affectionately being called Breast Fest and Mamapalooza. So, it's very exciting to know that forty-four of our Marion County Public Schools female employees will be receiving a free 3D screening mammogram with results given the same day. And on top of that, ten of our very own students from Marion Technical College, MTC, will be on hand for facial and nail consults. There will also be free bra fittings, refreshments, raffles, and door prizes. And this event filled very quickly. The hours were supposed to be 8:00 AM to noon, but due to the overwhelming response, the hours were extended until 2:00 PM. And even with that, there are still seventy women on the waiting list, and free appointments are being offered to them as they become available. It was such a good response that discussions are already taking place to make this a quarterly event. And it's just so uplifting to partner with Radiology Associates and Women's Imaging for the benefit of our hard-working employees, to keep them healthy and save money at the same time. So, I'm looking forward to stopping by there on Saturday, and this is just a really great initiative, great community partnership. So, that's all I have for tonight.
Okay, thank you.
Thanks.
Ms. Stacy?
Yes. I would like to speak a little bit tonight about our responsibilities as a school board that we have, that I've been talking about for a very, very long time, that we have a lot more power than we realize. We've relegated a lot of our power to others, and I would like to ask that we bring back the proposal where we do address the school board, the attorneys, that, Mr. Gibbs, you suggested back in January that we update the information, what was that called?
The resolution for the adopting the state rates?
Yeah, that sort of thing. We need to, we need to come back, and when you talk about our attorney expenses and that sort of thing, because I've been following school board policy, looking at school board policy, and it appears that our policy is very, very clear, that the superintendent's attorney is only to handle legal matters that the school board attorneys can't handle, which would be any issue with employment issues and that type of thing that would be involved. Our school board policy does not cover for the attorney to be paid for any of the, doing the duties that the superintendent would normally do. So, I do want to talk about the fact that we need to really clarify that bill when it comes. This board needs to have the attorney's bill sent to us to make sure, to see what the hours are being, are pertaining to, because I do not believe by our board policy that we are required to pay for any of the calls or any of the things, the back and forth, anything that's gone to the attorney so far. So, we will need to go over those bills. I've looked, and as far as, you know, the school board having contact with staff, our board, our board policy speaks to the principles of professional conduct that is in the state regulations, the rules. Number seventeen, the board is encouraged to keep teachers informed, can't be done if we can't contact staff. Statute 1001.43 speaks to the school board members visiting schools, and it requires staff contact. Statute 1001.43, duties of the district school board, to adopt policies for fiscal management of which legal budgets would be included. We need to look at these budgets, we need to see where we are, or we're not following this statute of being fiscally responsible. We cannot have legal bills that are exceeding, they're coming into our general fund, taking up dollars that should be in the classroom. And, number six of that statute says, to adopt policies for legal requirements. So, it also speaks to, under item 11, under that same statute, personnel. The school board may adopt policies and procedures necessary for the management of personnel, of all personnel of the school district. The school board may adopt policies and procedures necessary for the management of personnel, of all personnel of the school district. That is very interesting because in our research, I did speak with Mr. Gibbs about this and I had contacted him because I felt like the rules, a lot of the, of the state statutes speaks of the rules that the schools boards can make. This has been really not promoted by our state school board associations, FSBA, or any of the organizations. I did get involved with it with some individuals that I was personally involved with in going over this information. I took it to Mr. Gibbs and he sent me a, he sent me kind of a gathering of information that he pulled together that we talked about. And after he researched the things that I asked him and he sent me an email this morning backing up what I, my concerns were. In fact, he even included in it an AGO report. Let me find that. AGO report, it was 83-72, it says, "Unless expressly prohibited by the Constitution or general law, school boards may exercise any power for school purposes in the operation, control, and supervision of the free public schools." I would like for this school board, it's a, it's a, an incredibly well-versed school board in so many different areas. We have profession, we have ESE people, we have, you know, we have a minister that can reach out into the faith families. And we have a person that's involved with children's services in her, on her private job. We have a teacher that we're represented. And as I roll off the school board, I would really like for us to get into discussions about the powers of this school board. So much has been relegated to others that makes it seem as though the superintendent has all this power. It's because we have relegated a lot of our power to others. So I'll be putting my thoughts together on this and maybe an upcoming workshop, we'll talk about it. But we do need to, to discuss the attorney's contract information that, that you and I spoke about, that you wanted to bring forward, just kind of never got on the agenda to bring forward. And that's all I have to say about that. I would like to say that I did attend the training last night and Jennifer Beck did a phenomenal job working with the, y'all know I'm on this retention. I'm on this retention. And I'm bulldogging that. And so she did such a great job last night. She had the, the teachers that had volunteered to be a part of this, K-2, she had them at individual tables. And she had them, okay, here's the pros, here's the cons to retention. And she, each table gave their pros, their cons. And it was extremely informative and it was what we all kind of already knew. But it was interesting hearing it coming from the teachers and, and their opinions. And so I did overhear one teacher when they said, now here you're going to put the cons on this page. And I overheard this teacher tell her table, I see no cons to this because it's so, it's such an obvious thing that we don't want to set children up for failure and we don't want to put teachers on high blood pressure medication because we're putting students in their classroom that's two years behind. So anyway, that was interesting. There's another meeting next Monday night and I will be attending that. Ms. Thrower was also at the meeting last night. And I found it most interesting to, to hear how Jennifer Beck is allowing the teachers to have a lot of input into this decision. And I thank her for setting it up exactly the way I envisioned that this would move forward. She could, she just, if I had asked her to do it a certain way, she's doing it better than I could have even envisioned. So I want to shout out to her. Thank you.
Yes, absolutely.
Ms. McCall?
Yes, thank you. Dr. Mayor, I would like to be sure that after the first nine weeks, the quick facts sheets that we had last year were incredibly helpful to me. And so I would love it if we bring that back after the first nine weeks.
We have a date. What was it?
We do. It's coming up. It was after the QSMAs.
It's coming up.
Yeah. All right. Because those were, and I'll have the attendance, the disciplines, it'll have everything on there. I had the opportunity to represent the school board at Forest High School Friday evening for the dedication of the stadium to Mikey Kelly. Mikey Kelly was an outstanding administrator in our community. He was Mike Kelly's, who's the principal of MTC and MTI. Just an outstanding man. And the turnout of the alumni and the impact that that gentleman had on the students in our county and on our community as a whole was pretty remarkable. And to have his name on that stadium, his whole family, all of his kids and now grandkids went to Forest High School. So it was quite an impressive evening. We have had our first insurance committee meeting, moving forward with that, not going to wait. We are beginning to move forward with that. I had the opportunity to present at the Consortium of Florida Education Foundations Annual Meeting last week, where there were over 50 public education foundations from all over the state there. Those foundations, including ours, have raised $65 million for the public school system in the state of Florida. They are thought of very highly around the United States. The Consortium of Florida Education Foundations is the organization that brings them all together. That is their association where they get professional development. They had a lovely reception on Friday evening where Representative Paul Renner of Flagler County, who will eventually be the Speaker of the House, was there and actually handed out checks to those, to a lot of those foundations, including ours. And ours won a Florida Lottery Special Grant called Lighting the Way to Bright Futures. So I was very proud of them. Also Chancellor Oliva did a fabulous presentation, a data dive on the state standards. And it was, it was really outstanding and talked about how education foundations with their grants and all that they do can have an impact on student achievement, which most of them are currently doing. But I think he gave some good ideas on what to do. Also, I want to commend our school system on their Red Ribbon Campaign. It is so crucial with all of the drugs that are in our community to have us involved in that. So I say thank you. And finally, I want to thank Marion Technical College Culinary Department because for the Children's Alliance Night of Hope banquet, they were actually the caterers and did an absolute marvelous job. So thank you. Darren Nein has moved over there and it was wonderful working with him. So that's all I have. Madam Chair?
Thank you. Mr. Cummings?
Good evening, everybody, again. I do want to, on the first, when was the, October 1st, I think, last week, we had the opportunity to go over to Brewster's Hall where Chancellor Olivia was there. And he, he gave a very, very great presentation to the principals. There was a lot of information given and very optimistic about where we're going with our education system. He, he gave some great stuff. Also, we, prior to that, we were able to go over to Evergreen, myself and some of my fraternity members, a few of our fraternity members went to different schools. We were, I happened to be at Evergreen. There were some that were at Madison. Take your dads, take your kids to school day. Very good, very good event. It's, it's always encouraging when you get to see fathers bringing their kids to school. Sometimes they may not have the opportunity to do it as often, but it was very, it was very good. My son didn't want me to take him to school that day at Howard, so. So I got to go to elementary school, but it was very good. Shout out to Ms., to the administration over at Evergreen for being so welcoming to those, those fathers and to the, the kids. Ms. Haynes came and said some stuff. We can't say anything right now. We're in, in investigation. But I, I thank you. I want to say this. I thank you publicly because you are just echoing some of the things that the community does, has been saying. They say it often. But I, I can assure you that, and I can assure the community, at, at some point, the board is together and, including the superintendent, we're going to, it's going to be good. It's going to get better. I, I believe that. I pray about it every day. And I pray for every person that's up here. So, and I know it, it can only get better. It can only get better. So y'all pray with us. Let me say that. You all pray with us. And if we're doing, if we're praying together as a community, our kids are going to get better. I don't ever want us to take, take for granted our teachers or any of our staffs. We have some great staff. I've been going to different schools. I was at Anthony last week and I just had the opportunity to talk to, to the custodian and the custodial staff out there. And just, just, you know, sometimes we walk by people, we take, think that their job is not significant. But every job is important in this school district. I don't care if it's changing the toilet paper rolls. It's that important. And we have to make sure that we value all of our staff and let them know it and tell them often. So I, I'm encouraged when I see principals at these schools encouraging and talking and, and being motivating and inspiring to their staff. Sometimes we forget about the support staff, but the support staff is just as valuable as the teachers. So it's, it's, we got a lot going on. We also, some of us were down at Howling Hills for some training. And some of us will be back at Howling Hills this week for some more training. And we do all this training because we want to be the best board that we can be. We want to know what we're supposed to know. We want to know those, all those statutes and what our duties are. And we want to be an effective, efficient, effective board. And the only way we're going to do that is for us to learn what our, what our jobs are and to represent them in the best way possible so that we can give our kids the best possible education in Marion County. And it be done civilly and it be done in such a way that when people watch this, because there's somebody watching. Somebody's watching this and they, they're watching it for the wrong reason. But I hope they're watching it because they want to see how good we're working together and not because they want to see how much we're going to fight. So, thank you all.
Thank you. I just have some housekeeping items this evening. I would like to ask our superintendent for, for us to revisit a substitute policy for our substitute teachers at 6.145. It's been brought to my attention, like with our policy as it is right now, a substitute teacher could be 18 years of age. And they also have to, they could have like an AA degree or AS degree or five years of verified experience or whatever. I just think we need to revisit that because if we have a graduate that's 18, I'm not sure that it's necessarily appropriate that they're teaching the high school that they just left last year. They're teaching their peers.
Correct.
And, you know, so we can revisit that. So if you don't mind, if you could just make that recommendation, that we can revisit that policy.
And that wouldn't overlap with Neola or what they're doing right now?
We can do Neola, but if you want to do it before the Neola, Neola wants to implement all of theirs at one time. We're about halfway done right now.
So we can look into it though and do a procedure till we get to a policy?
Yeah.
Sure.
I think that just need to revisit that. There just seems to be some.
So work session and then move forward?
Yeah. It doesn't have to be anything long and drawn out, but I definitely think it needs to be addressed.
I agree. I agree. And I don't think we had looked at our policies since, what, the year 2000?
Some of them date back there. I mean, here and there. It depends. It depends on if it was a legislative mandate. We've got some newer policies and stuff.
Right.
Like the, I think the drug-free workplace thing was relatively new. So that one is being implemented with Neola as well. We're just transferring ours over to the Neola. There are a few, but we do have some that are outdated.
And ours are difficult to find.
Yes.
And it's not updated on the website. It's just, it's.
It is difficult. I agree.
It needs to be a little easier. So I'm hoping with Neola, it will be.
That's what our training told us.
Yes.
That it was difficult to find.
Right. And, and some of them were pretty ambiguous and it's a lot to go through them all, but it's definitely worth the effort. And as different situations present themselves, we want to make sure that we're reviewing our policies every couple, three years, not every couple of decades. So I'm glad that on top of everything else, that we're striving to be on top of this too. So thank you for bringing that up.
Thank you. Also, I have just handed out a resolution that Dr., doctor, excuse me, Mr. Gibbs has prepared for us. I know it is a work, the school board evening, but we're going to have another, we're not going to meet again for, till next week. And then we have another school board meeting on October 24th. I would like for us just to maybe see if we could just take a few minutes and, and I'll read this if you guys want to talk about this. This, it would be a resolution of the School Board of Marion County, Florida, supporting the use of the standard fee schedule for private attorney services adopted by the Florida Attorney General. Whereas the school board pursuant to 1001.42 shall exercise all powers to contract for material, supplies, and services needed for the, the district school system. And whereas the school board is charged by 1001.363 with representation of the district and has power pursuant to 1001.41 and 1001.43, Florida statutes 2019 and Florida Admin Code R6A-1.012 to legislate policies and procedures for the efficient management of the school district. And whereas there is a longstanding history wherein the school board has informally followed the 1997 standard fee schedule for private attorney services adopted by the Florida Attorney General. And whereas the school board has experienced drastic funding reductions and desires to limit the financial impact of the school district's use of outside counsel by formally adopting a standard fee schedule of rates for private attorney services or when in the best interest of the district, by requiring the use of the invitation-to-bid process for solicitation of outside counsel services. And whereas the school board now desires to provide guidance on this important issue to the superintendent of schools. Now therefore, it is resolved by the School Board of Marion County, Florida, at a regular meeting duly assembled that one, all outside councils paid using school district funds must enter an outside council agreement template and must be approved by the school board. Rates of services must be consistent with the following standard fee schedule. For current rates are, A, attorney entering outside council agreement may bill up to $175 per billable hour. B, all associate attorneys may bill up to $125 per billable hour. C, all paralegal legal assistant, law clerk, and research assistant services may be billed up to $65 per billable hour. Should the school district receive rates from outside counsel in excess of the standard fee schedule listed above, such rates must be rejected and the legal services to be provided will be subject to an invitation-to-bid, which is herein defined for the purposes of this resolution as written solicitation for competitive sealed bids. And then we could sign it. I don't know, I know this is kind of last minute. I don't know what your thoughts were. I know in the past, you know, when there was spending fees, we rejected them and we wanted to stay in the boundaries and the guidelines of $175 per billable hour. So I gave you guys that. We are going to meet, have another board meeting on October 24th. We could put this, go ahead and put it on there and then if we want to, you know, tweak it or change it.
Talk about this at a work session?
Yeah, we can. We're going to meet next Thursday. So we can talk about it then. Or?
I just, I mean, the 1997 fee schedule, I, I want to know a little bit more about what others in surrounding counties are paying. What is their fee schedule? What is, what is standard for now, not 1997? I really, I, I need to see that to make a good decision.
We've had these discussions. I, you know, we've had.
But I don't, but I don't have.
She probably does need to. I agree, Ms. McCall. I think we need to adjust some of this since it is the older one.
The current, I know the current rate's 200.
Whoa. The current rate is 200 and yet we're asking to go back to 175. The current rate is two hundred, and yet we're asking to go back to a hundred and seventy-five.
Okay.
I'm just, I'm.
That's where you currently have it.
We're currently at one seventy-five.
I know, but we're not paying anybody one seventy-five, I can tell you.
Yeah, we do.
Yes, we do.
Yes, we do.
Most of ours are one seventy-five.
Are at one seventy-five.
But I really would not have a problem with moving it to the, when did the Attorney General, when's the last, what was the date that that was recommended on?
I'd say two thousand eight, but I'm not positive.
That made an adjustment. I would really be interested in updating it to that, to that level. So Ms. King, if we could.
I'll bring the full rate schedule.
That's what I'd like to see, too, the most up-to-date standard fee schedule.
I'll call around and ask what other districts are paying their outside counsel.
I really, I really would like to see that, because what I don't want to happen is us to do this and get an attorney that's not an A-rated attorney. I mean, we have to be careful with that. We want really good legal representation. And I'm not saying we need to pay four hundred dollars an hour, but I do think we have to be competitive to get those good attorneys. So I just, in order to make a really good, intelligent decision, I need to see and hear what others are doing.
And, you know, as far as the attorney, this is kind of a steady-type thing for an attorney. So I know they work a little bit less. Even the, the contract attorneys we have right now probably work for a little bit less than they would in private practice, because it's kind of a guaranteed, you know, it's a guaranteed job, and, and, you know, that they're going to have access to us and that sort of thing. And so, but I do think that maybe the one seventy-five rate, we need to adjust a little bit. I know we've talked about it. We've gone back and forth, and a lot's happened since we first talked about it, that maybe we need to move it up to that. But, and kind of see what's going on around the state, because we don't need a bunch of attorneys filing in here saying that we're trying to make this a third-world country for their business or something. So, you know. It needs to, it needs to, I think, be an amount that's acceptable. And, and along the lines of, not necessarily Orange County, but a district, maybe Lake County, or somebody close to our size, Alachua Lake. Citrus is smaller than us, but surrounding.
What our surrounding counties are paying.
So what they are. Okay. So do we want to wait and discuss it next week? And then, but it won't be able to be on the October twenty-fourth agenda. We're looking at November.
Why couldn't we put it on the agenda?
We can. That's why I was, I was trying to figure out what we want to do.
Yeah, we put it on the agenda and just amend it on, at our workshop. Amend this, and it could still go on the next.
You'd have to amend it in the meeting. So I mean, if you, you can do it if you want to do that.
Amend it Thursday?
No. You'd have to amend it at the meeting. At the board meeting, you would have to pass it and then have your list of amendments on your.
And then we could pass it that night?
With amendment.
Okay, that would be fine.
So, okay, so we'll go.
We can do that.
Add this to the agenda. We'll add this to our work session, and then if we need to amend it, we can.
Okay.
Okay. Before addressing expulsion matters, I wish to acknowledge that board members have received the alternative placement list for students through September nineteenth, twenty nineteen. Ms. Martina Lopez, are there any parents who have submitted a timely request to speak on their child's disciplinary matter?
Yes, we have two parents off air.
Okay, thank you. Prior to the board's considering the superintendent's recommendation for expulsion, parents have had an opportunity to discuss options available to them. If the student is expelled, the school board staff remains available to talk with the parents about the alternative educational programs available for the expelled student. This concludes the televised and business portion of this meeting at six twenty-three PM.